...out from a tweet.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, let me ask Councilman Brad Stipes if he will lead the force.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one public hearing on our agenda tonight, and it is the VDOT six-year plan priorities. Mr. Helms?
In order to change our priority list that we've had for the past several years, we have to have a public hearing, and what we're doing is removing 114 from the list, which is almost complete, and want to add the intersection upgrade at North Franklin Street and Cambria Street, including the implementation, implement recommendations of functionality study at North Franklin Street between Cambria and Independence Boulevard, and potential coordinated signal system on that section of the road. And then the next second priority would be North Franklin Street to Pepper's Ferry Road connector, and this would be the section from Pepper's Ferry Road to Cambria Street. And our third priority would be the section from Cambria Street to North Franklin Street. So that's the resolution, and it would be passing also that we would pay our portion to the VDOT six-year plan, and actually comes about. That's the reason we need to have a public hearing and pass a resolution so we can change our priorities.
Okay.
That portion's only 2%.
It's 2% of construction, 5% of engineering, and land acquisition, but we own most of the land.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone here to address this matter before council? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. I will call the meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. I will ask each one of you, did you receive a copy of the minutes? Have time to review them?
I've seen them and reviewed them, and I make a motion that we adopt them as presented.
Okay. A motion in a couple of seconds, so any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Certainly there's no one approved, opposed?
I would have to abstain, Mr. Mayor, as I was not present for the last meeting due to having pneumonia, which I didn't want to share with the rest of you.
That's a shady excuse, but I've said...
I never sell any dogs.
Yeah, he does. Before we go into our citizens' hearing portion of the meeting, it is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Erica Williams, who is the clerk of the courts of Montgomery County, and she is going to administer the oath of office to Mr. Sam Bishop.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's fine.
It's always a pleasure to serve the citizens of Montgomery County and the town of Christiansburg, which I am a resident of, and a pleasure to be with you folks this evening, always an honor to come swearing and administer an oath to a friend.
Thank you.
So if you are ready...
I'm ready.
All right. I'll go slow, you'll raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. I, Sam Bishop...
I, Sam Bishop.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
All the duties...
All the duties.
...oncoming upon me...
Oncoming upon me.
As a member...
As a member.
Of the Christiansburg Town Council.
Of the Christiansburg Town Council.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do I have to solemnly say things?
No. Goodness gracious. Oh, okay, I got you covered now. You got me covered. I got you covered now. I thought you didn't write. They do, they do. Okay.
I'll take my turn now.
Okay.
This is the 13th.
Now, Sam, when you win next year again, it's gonna be your job, since you've been through, it'll be your third time around to...
Yes. We expect you to memorize it and sing it. All right. I've heard you sing, Sam, maybe just repeat. Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Williams, it's always a pleasure to have you come before us, we appreciate your service.
Well, it's a pleasure to serve the council, and I will see that the clerk gets a coffee.
Very good.
And if you folks don't need me anymore, I think you have lots of business to do.
Thank you.
Thanks again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Good seeing you. I'd like to thank everyone for your support this year, and hopefully in the future. Without your support, I wouldn't be here. So that's to everyone that's in the audience now, and the ones that's not here, with my first, the state committee of Christiansburg. Thank you. Questions? They allow, we welcome citizens to come and speak before any matter that they may have on their mind. We ask that you give your name, your address, and address your statements to the chair. Is there anyone here that would like to address council tonight?
Good evening, my name is Stacy Newell, I live at 425 Arrowhead Trail. I also have earned building downtown Christiansburg. I'd like to start by offering sincere thanks to each of you individuals for the service that you provide through the mayor, who I think the job has grown exponentially, but I appreciate the effort, each council member, the clerk, Mr. Helms, and the staff. I've had the privilege over the past almost 20 years now of working with people in various capacities. Tonight, why I'm here is that on the agenda later, you're going to be doing committee assignments, and one committee that I'm very interested in is what is known as the Central Business District. And if I direct your attention to the mat in back of Mr. Showalter, you'll see that the Central Business District is actually uniquely zoned area. And sometime over the past five to seven years, the definition of what this committee is responsible for had what I call scope creep, it kind of went to all commercial districts, and that's all the red areas in Christiansburg. And I understand the importance of economic development. I was disappointed to hear on the news yesterday that Farmhouse Restaurant was closing, and I think that that's a town icon. When I lived in Fencastle, Virginia, we would drive an hour to visit the Farmhouse. I understand the council has also subsequently directed certain staff members to focus more on economic development that's specific to Christiansburg and beyond any monetary contributions council provides for regional or county economic development efforts. New committees that have also been formed since the Central Business District was initially formed, such as Bike Ways and now the Farmer's Market, which I heard in tonight's news is gonna get a little bit more competition because of a grant, a major grant going to Giles County, as well as the county tourism that you all contribute to, and private event groups such as Downtown Christiansburg, all contribute to the fabric of economic development. But I would ask council, when opportune, with this specific committee, the Central Business District Committee, and economic development, whether it's a work session, to kind of pull the strings together so that we can get some traction for specifically revitalizing the downtown area and replacing empty storefronts with vibrant businesses that are there 365, as well as other areas that were seeing businesses closed throughout the town. So again, I don't know if that's a work meeting, a visioning meeting, or when, but I would just let you know that it's a concern of mine, and I stand willing to help however I can to support economic development specific to Christiansburg and what we don't have in town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there anyone else here that would like to address town council? Seeing none, I will close the citizens' portion of the citizens' hearing portion, and we'll go directly to discussions by mayor and council members. The first one is a resolution supporting the proposed park and ride to be located near I-81, exit 118. And I think that was in your work packet, you probably have a copy, I'll be glad, I will be glad to read it. Is that all we have? Yes, that's all I did. Thank you. This is a resolution supporting the proposed design for the relocation by the Virginia Department of Transportation Interstate 81, exit 118, Falling Branch Park and Ride Facility. Whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, plans to relocate the Interstate 81, exit 118, Falling Branch Park and Ride Facility, and whereas on October 30th, 2014, a design public hearing was held at Falling Branch Elementary School with VDOT attending to present the proposed scope of work to include approximately 299 parking spaces, sidewalk lighting, bus shelters, and other bicycle and handicap accommodations, and whereas 23 citizens attended the October 30th design and public hearing, and whereas VDOT recommends that major design features shown in the October 30th design public hearing be approved, and whereas the Interstate 81, exit 118, Falling Branch Park and Ride relocation and proposed limited access changes, which includes shifting and providing a break to maximize the future use of the site and surplus VDOT property, and whereas the Interstate 81, exit 118, Falling Branch Park and Ride relocation project is identified in the VDOT six-year plan, six-year improvement plan for FY 2015-20, and as VDOT project number 999-060-809-P101-M501-UPC-105518, with projected allocations identified to cover the anticipated project costs. And now therefore be resolved that the council hereby supports the design of the location of the Interstate 81, exit 118, Falling Branch Park and Ride Facility, and be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution is forwarded to the Department of Transportation. Upon a call for now vote, the forward resolution, this will be done. Any discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say one thing, not exactly concerning the resolution that you just read, concerning VDOT's responsibility there, but I'm hoping that council, as time goes by, considers and still thinks about having a welcome center in that location. And just because we approved this, and I hope that we will still, in the coming years, try to push, and I think it'd be a great thing if we could have a welcome center there, and that is not VDOT's responsibility, I know, that's more of our responsibility, but I'm just hoping that we will not forget that, and we'll continue to work for it in the coming years.
Speaking for myself, I'm interested in something like that happening too, and we need to continue to work. Like you say, it's independent of this resolution, but we do need to continue to follow up on that in times coming up and see what we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I would just want to mention that the, what a process that the relocation of the park and ride has been from inception, where it was, there was a lot of, I think some public support in Christiansburg, not a lot of support, I don't believe, outside of the area at the time. I don't think, I think maybe it was even minimized the importance of moving that park and ride. The safety and welfare of our children was first and foremost in the minds of the citizens. They pushed this, I think council got behind this at a time in which, well, again, it was not that it was so popular, but it may have been a small item for many people. We all got behind it, other entities got behind it, but it was certainly pushed, again, by our council, and by our staff, by the citizens, by the parents of Falling Branch specifically. Quite a few parents got extremely involved, and obviously by our state elected officials as well. It was kind of a perfect storm where everyone came together to move the park and ride, and now we come up with a, what I consider to be a fantastic item, that we're looking to approve today, the resolution to approve today, that's gonna enhance, again, safety of our children first and foremost, but also provide off-site parking for, I mean, it's so much larger than the past parking ride. Again, I just, it's one of those things where I haven't been on council that long, and certainly I'm not that old, but it's one of those things where I've seen a project from beginning to completion. Now, I know this is the last stage, but it really makes you sick to sit back and smile because of the amount of people that have approached us, and I'm sure all of them, council can speak to this, and said, "Thanks." And really, this was something that citizens, in my opinion, really pulled the heavy lifting, and it really did the majority of the work on, so I'm just, I'm just really thrilled about this project, you have no idea. So again, I'm just really appreciative of everyone that was involved, and I want to give those citizens their due credit, because they really did not let this drop.
I'll echo Mr. Hall's comments, and likewise, I'm excited because it's, the projected allocations have been identified for this, so we need to proceed rapidly, and therefore I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I got a question. I just briefly looked at it, and we can see it up here, are there any amenities, like a bathroom or...
There's not being bathrooms, there'll be three bus shelters, bike racks, bike lockers, informational kiosks, and handicap parking accommodations, but no restrooms, it's not a rest area, it's a park and ride, and VDOT doesn't put rest area, or restrooms in the park and rides at this point.
I understand, but also will be a bus stop as well?
Yeah.
Or really a bus terminal. Is there any way we could just follow up with that, or is it, it's not going?
We've asked them several times, they don't plan on it happening, but there is a possibility to have some of the same accommodation we had at other bus stops.
So they did have some facilities.
The county, yes, the county...
County, but...
But I don't know.
Portageons.
There's always that possibility, but...
We'll, we have a liaison meeting in the morning, I think, Barry, maybe we can remember to ask them if the county, if they would consider that part of it.
I need to make a statement, of course, this has probably a three-year history with the park and ride, at least two and a half year, and as of the Commissioner of Transportation's announcement in April of 2013, and VDOT's commitment to do this, the firm I work for is actually under contract with VDOT, doing design on this project, so I must abstain from, although I'm delighted with the project, I must abstain, necessarily abstain from the vote tonight on that account.
Think you can get a little green space in there for a potential bathroom? I'm giving him a hard time, now I'm knocking on his door, that's just a joke.
Well, as Mr. Helms said, I will make one statement, because that has come up, and VDOT's position has been, they have not, there's no precedent for restroom facilities at parks and rides statewide, not Nova, not Virginia Beach, not Richmond, and it's a fine line between a rest area and a park and ride, so there's no precedent for it. Not that that couldn't change, but it's not that VDOT has said no to this, they haven't done anywhere else in the state.
I guess the biggest question I will have then is, as it operates as a bus terminal at times, would be the amount of time for the layover, because the last thing we would want, the difference now being that, we used to have a school that was right across, now we're gonna have residences that are somewhat close in proximity, and to have accommodations on site. I mean, I do agree with what Henry's saying, that's one thing we talked about years ago with the, when we talked about a new park and ride, but if it is gonna be long layovers and all, I would hope there would be charging stations, and would be some item, or some ability for somebody to, again, just use the restroom, and maybe have something covered where they could go under, in case there was a inclement weather.
You know, I've heard some talk that maybe is, they're doing some consideration of putting a McDonald's, we'll just say, and having a McDonald's maybe in that lot, and then having a half of it be McDonald's and half being a visitor center, so that would help in both cases there, provide bathroom considerations, and a place to eat, and also have the welcome center. Mr. Helms, have you heard something of that nature too?
There'll be a commercial lot right there, and there's nothing planned at this point, but hopefully there'll be a restaurant, or a motel, or a convenience store, some tax-producing entity, but that maybe we can partner with.
I think you know that all of us here in council, you can hear them talking, we support something of that nature, I think we can, I can say that.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, statements? And clerk, would you poll council?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
I abstain.
Councilman Van Hoosia.
Aye.
I believe that is 5:01, thank you, gentlemen. Next is a resolution in support of the VDOT six-year plan priorities. The resolution, also in your package, resolution supporting implementation of functional improvements between Cambria Street and Independence Boulevard in conjunction with intersection improvements at North Franklin Street and Cambria Street in Virginia Department of Transportation project programming and re, good God, prioritization of projects within the program. Whereas in accordance with the Virginia Department of Transportation Construction Allocation Procedures, it is necessary that a request by council resolution be made in order that the Virginia Department of Transportation Program and Urban Highways Projects in the town of Christiansburg. Now therefore be it resolved that the town, the council of town of Christiansburg, Virginia, requests the Virginia Department of Transportation to implement functional improvements between Cambria Street and Independence Boulevard in conjunction with intersection improvements at North Main Street and Cambria Street as an urban system highway project, and be it further resolved that the council of town of Christiansburg requests the Virginia Department of Transportation to reprioritize the town's urban system highway projects as follows. One, intersection upgrade at North Franklin Street and Cambria Street, including implementation of improvement recommendations of functionality study for North Franklin Street between Cambria Street and Independence Boulevard, and the potential for coordinated signal system UPC 104387. North Franklin Street, Pepper's Ferry Road, Northwest Connector Route, Pepper's Ferry Road to Cambria Street, UPC 70594. North Franklin Street, Pepper's Ferry Road, Northwest Connector Route, Cambria Street to North Franklin Street, phase formerly UPC 70594, to be determined. And be it further resolved that the council of town of Christiansburg hereby agrees to pay its share of the total cost for preliminary engineering right of way in construction of these projects in accordance with Code of Virginia 33-1-44, and that if the town of Christiansburg subsequently elects to cancel the project, the town of Christiansburg hereby agrees to reimburse the Virginia Department of Transportation for the total amount of the cost expended by the department through the date the department is notified of such term, such cancellation.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I know that we approve the resolution in support of the VDOT six-year priorities and the reprioritization.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions?
Crucial, is all I've got to say. That, I think Brad has been an individual that I've went to and probably asked most questions on this, in this regard, but that intersection, actually the rec center, is, I can't imagine a, it's just confusing, we always talked about, what is it called, is the signal, trying to align the signals to where, I'm sorry, the stoplights coordination, and that's just an issue, an area there where I can only imagine someone new to the town or someone coming through would get confused, so I think it's a fantastic reprioritization.
Any other comments, statements, questions?
I would tell people we hired an engineer from UVA to do that, that's why I did it.
Give me some man action.
I do support this resolution.
Any other relevant comments?
I do support this resolution, but I am curious, and, you know, we've talked about over the course of a couple of years, and waiting for the funds to come in, that there's some easy, cost-effective measures like right turn only, coming out of Waffle House, the rec center, one of the rec center entrances on North Franklin and McDonald's, is that something that our street committee, and I don't mean to put Brad and Jim on the spot, that that's something we're still seriously considering doing until, because those funds could be years and years and years off, and that's, those are dangerous intersections.
Our Bike Way Walkway Committee discussed that on Friday as well, and the town is assigning some of those tasks to...
The engineering department does have part P out for, to design the deceleration line there at Independence, which is one of the recommendations, they're getting firms on hand, start doing some of that design.
Is there any idea, Mr. Helms, as to when council could expect the, some recommendations to flow from that?
Hopefully with the budget.
Okay, so within the next six months? I still think that left turn out of McDonald's is the, at this time, the most dangerous turn in Christiansburg.
I agree with you.
All right. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosia.
Aye.
We'll call it 6:00.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an update on the proposed local legislative date. We had hoped at the last meeting to get with our, our local representatives and state senators about having a meeting here with them, rather than to travel to Richmond to try to, try to catch them on a very busy day. We're not gonna be able to put that together. However, what we have done, Mr. Helms and Mr. Wingfield have prepared a resolution that we're going to send to all of our representatives, I believe there's three plus two state senators and anyone else that we can send it to, outlining some of the things of interest that we have as a town. So if I may, I will read that resolution. Resolution setting forth the town of Christiansburg's 2015 legislative priorities. Whereas the council of town of Christiansburg, Virginia desires to adopt a legislative resolution containing the town's proposals and positions for the upcoming general assembly sessions. Whereas the council of town of Christiansburg, Virginia requests the general assembly to protect revenue sources, to maintain local government's land use and decision-making powers, and to provide greater authority for creative solutions to local issues. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of town of Christiansburg, Virginia, that following constitutes the town of Christiansburg's legislative resolution for the 2015 general assembly. One, the town of Christiansburg opposes the adoption of unfunded mandates of local governments. The town of Christiansburg supports protection of local government's taxing authorities for current revenue sources. The town of Christiansburg endorses the Virginia Municipal League 2015 legislative program, and there's a reference to the online website for this, and in particular, they're program for the following. State assistance to local law enforcement HB 599, transportation funding, first day introduction of bills with local fiscal impact, water quality funding, taxing, licensing, and regulating internet-based businesses and services. And I don't know, did you all have a copy of this in your packet?
No, no.
And I will add, I have copies of a couple of other similar resolutions that the town of Blacksburg and Montgomery County have proposed and are proposing, and have sent to the legislative people. The town, the two towns are fairly similar in what we're, what we're asking, the county has a lot more funding things on the table than we have, so, but we pretty well put this together, and I appreciate Randy and Barry getting together and getting this thing done for us. If you would like, I would be glad to pass this around, we would like to get it out within the next couple of days.
Does that require a vote?
It does require a vote, it is, it is a resolution.
I've heard what you've mentioned, and I would concur, especially with... I've heard what you've mentioned, and I would concur, especially with the unfunded mandates. I approve, I would move that we approve the, uh, proposed, uh, resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second that, and I would want to say that, uh, in the absence of meeting with our legislative representatives, I would encourage each of you, if you get an opportunity to contact them, just to back up and support this.
Well, we're going to pursue another meeting after, after they come out of this session, just so we're not quite as rushed. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So you're saying we're proposing that after the session, that maybe they'll come back here and talk to us and tell us what...
We're trying to set up a day that we can get together.
That'd be great, yeah.
So, you have a motion and a second, is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
I believe that's a six oh. Thank you, ma'am. Reappointments of the Christiansburg Aquatic Center Advisory Board members whose terms expired December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, Steve Simmons, Mark Lane, and Amelia Tuckwiler. These reappointments are for a three-year term. Is Tuckwiler, are you here?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, I will correct you, it is not Tuckwiler. It's Tuck Willer, right?
That's correct.
Is Mr. Simmons, Mr. Lane here?
You say potato, I say potato, huh?
I would like to go ahead and appoint Ms., how do you pronounce it, Jim?
Tuck Willer.
Tuck Willer. Um, it's one of the things we require, that our commission members be here, and I appreciate you attending. Um, it's something I'm serious about, at least in the new coming year. Uh, I would like to table the reappointment of Mr. Lane and Mr. Simmons until the next meeting. I would like to request that they be here, because this isn't anything new. Uh, we request all our commission members and committee members to be here. Um, we've had Mr. Weaver, who's in his eighties, who serves on the NRV PDC with me, who showed up. Ms. Carter, who's in her eighties, she shows up. And really, we've required that of, out of our rec commission, and typically they've been showing up. So I'd like to table their reappointment until the next meeting. And then, hopefully they'll, they'll come and we can reappoint.
Will they contact? Okay, all right. So we're gonna, the recommendation is that we appoint Ms. Tuck Willer? I always call that picture in my office, a Tuck Willer from there. But anyway, okay, so, uh, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
A motion to appoint Ms. Tuck Willer and table the other two.
And Mr. Mayor, one thing I would want to mention, just for the citizens that are here, it's, this is no way a slap in the face to the individuals that aren't present. The rationale for this is that citizens get a chance, since we're recorded, and also those that are present, to put a face with a name, so that way, when they go to an aquatic advisory commission meeting or any other commission meeting that we have here in the town, that they know who they're speaking with. Um, and also, I think it goes towards the seriousness of the position itself. It's much more than simply a, a rubber stamp by council. So I would sort of be in support of the motion as presented.
Motion in a second. Any, any further discussion? I believe we can do this with the voice that came. All those in favor of the, uh, appointment of Ms. 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 Tuck Willer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of tabling the other two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Certainly there's no opposed, so we will ask the, uh, the other two to, to come forward at our next meeting. Mr. Stipes, Mr. Van Hoosier, street committee report recommendations on subdivision flat of tax map five-two-six-a-dash-two-forty DMA five-two-six-a-two-three-nine and a lot line vacation of five-two-six-a-two-three-nam, two-three-nine, town for the division of milit-, for the department, division of military affairs in the town of Christiansburg along Depot Street Northwest and College Street Northwest, creating two lots. I believe this is the land swamp we've talked about. Uh, we're going to get the park area next to the armory and the area behind is, they will now have that as a personal park.
We get about, uh, less than a quarter acre lot, and we get about almost acre and a half.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's an improved acre and a half that we're getting as well, correct?
Well, we've improved.
Since we've improved it.
Uh, they, they will, uh, have asked for an easement along through the, uh, fire departments. They, they won't fill a parking lot there over that property, and have asked for an easement, which does not show on the plat, but we need to have that added.
Mayor, just to follow up, I mean, it's just not going to be just asphalt and curbs. I mean, they're, they're...
It's going to be under parking lot standards.
Okay, and we have upgraded that since our old standards that pretty much is, used to be just concrete lined, it's all concrete or all asphalt, correct? There'll be some...
That'd be landscaping.
Okay.
Trees.
I believe we...
We've already talked to them about that.
I believe we have an understanding that, uh, the times that they're not in, on drill or in drill, we can use that parking lot also for overflow parking at the fire department or whatever. So it's, it's a win-win.
Yeah, it really is. They've always helped us when it comes to parking.
Okay.
The mayor's pretty much given the report, so...
Good job, Brad.
The street committee recommends approval in the plat, and the form is presented to you this evening, and I'll make the recommendation in the form of a motion.
I'll second it. Thank you, Mayor.
Motion in a second. Well, I guess I used to read those resolutions. I'm just reading right on down the line now. Uh, all those in favor of approving this, uh, land swamp, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Certainly there's no one opposed.
We'll have to go to the legislature for final approval, but...
Both parties, the military and, and the town agree.
Administratively, it's been approved.
Okay. We're now into the reorganization for year two thousand fifteen, and the first matter is the election of a vice mayor.
Well, I understand that we have a, a person who stood up and said they will accept it, so I would proudly nominate Court Hall as vice mayor. Councilman Court Hall.
I'll second. Have a motion in a second.
And Court, you're not allowed any comments.
That comes with a vow of silence.
That's right.
So we have a motion in a second to appoint, uh, Court Hall as, as vice mayor for two thousand fifteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I, I, and I don't want anybody, I've got to say this. We, we, we like to, this is, this usually goes around and we rotate this. This is nothing where I'm, I'm anywhere special, but I do really appreciate the fact that you all, you know, have led to me this position. But, uh, but, you know, and I hope that next time to pass it along to someone to have...
You're not going to keep it?
That'll be...
For the record, Court, we, we think you're special.
I appreciate that. That usually happens when someone doesn't make the...
One thing, one thing I, uh, that I've noticed in other localities that I think's a good idea, and to sort of take some of this decision-making out of it, and I'm not requesting, or I'm not requesting that we revisit our bylaws, but I sort of like the concept of, in the last, whatever the last election was, the highest vote getter is automatically the vice mayor. And they do that, I know in the city of Roanoke, I know they do it in Blacksburg, they do it in some other localities Jim is probably aware of. And I'm not saying we do that, but I think it's a good idea, and Mr. Hall has slam dunked the last two blocks, if I'm being... But just to throw out, I don't, I'm not suggesting we change it now, but it's something for thought, for thought in the future, um, that I think has merit, because the vice mayor would be the, the fact, you know, the, it makes a lot of sense. There's some logic to it. There's a lot of support for that position.
Sounds good. And I can tell two thousand fifteen, Sam would be the, be it next year.
Sam would be, but you have to be on for two years.
You have to be on for two years.
Well, that'd be two years, don't worry. Just short, just short.
Just short enough, okay. That's all. But you got to run again in November anyway, don't you say?
Sure, we could change those rules if we need.
That's right.
All right. Again, we, I appreciate Mr. Hall's willingness to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next is set regular meeting dates for council. We currently meet the second and fourth, Thursday, Tuesdays of each month.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we continue the process of meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Uh, last time we changed the time from seven-thirty to seven, and I would ask that we keep the time at seven o'clock as well.
I'll second.
Any discussion? The motion is to set our regular meeting dates for the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at seven o'clock here at the Christiansburg Town Hall unless moved by council to an, to an alternate spot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Certainly there's no one opposed. The next is to authorize the vice mayor, assistant town manager, and finance officer, finance office manager to sign checks, and that is along with the mayor, the town manager, and our director of finance are automa-, are automatically authorized.
I'd so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of these names being added to the authorized signature list, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the appointment of committees of council, and I have decided for this year I would like to keep the council committees as they are, as they stand, and I would like to look at maybe in the next, since we'll have a, a, a goodly bunch of experience on the council, I would look at next year as maybe making some, some rotational changes in, in all the committees. So, uh, Water and Sewer and Solid Waste Committee, it's Mr. Showalter and Mr. Hall. The street committee is Mr. Stipes, Mr. Van Hoosier. The finance committee is Mr. Van Hoosier and Mr. Stipes. Fire and Rescue Committee is Mr. Bishop and Mr. Hubbard. Uh, Public Health and Welfare Committee is an ad hoc committee that we feel is needed. Uh, Central Business District Committee, Mr. Showalter and Mr. Bishop. The Cemetery Committee is an ad hoc, Mr. Hubbard. I'll ask if you'll continue as a representative on the Cemetery Committee. The Council on Human Relations Committee is an ad hoc committee. Uh, Chief Sisson, I believe, is one of the, uh, members of that committee, and we have the others as need.
Mr. Mayor, is there any, do we have to do anything with the, like, the aquatic advisory or the recreation commission?
No, no, these are town, these are...
Yes, sir.
Subcommittees.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So hearing, uh, hearing no questions or comments, I'll call for a motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second that we approve? You don't have to vote.
Your opponent.
Yeah, I'm appointed, okay. Well, that's the first thing I've got to do later. Your second thing, because I did it last year, and voted but once. Jim, you want to do the closed session, though?
I move that the town council enter into a closed meeting under Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-point, uh, three-seven-one-one A-one for the discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disment, or resignation of significant public officer, appointments of employees of any public body. The closed meeting has been held for discussion of personnel, specifically the appointment of officers for the year two thousand fifteen.
I make a motion.
I made a motion. She made that second.
Have a motion in a second to enter into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify. No, you better call that one, Jim.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
That is six oh. We will enter into closed session. We'll reconvene in the closed session in about three, four minutes, and I will ask all employees of the town, uh, with the exception, uh, no, all, all employees of the town, including the managers and everyone else, to please vacate along with our citizens. Thank you.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I should have showed that thing over to both.
Okay. I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in, in the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters fully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter in to closed meeting. And that's a motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to come out. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
Okay. The appointment of officers.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we reappoint for an additional year the town manager, Barry Helms, the chief of police, uh, Chief Sisson, Mark Sisson, the, um, uh, police, I'm sorry, the finance director, Valerie Tweedy, and the town attorneys, Gwen Memmer and Dylan, uh, for an additional year. Mr. Mayor?
I'll second that motion.
Madam Clerk? Is there any further discussion? Got to keep the...
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
I believe we have had a six oh.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make an additional motion that, um, separate from the other four, that we reappoint the clerk of council, Michelle Stipes, to an additional year term as well.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Did you call the roll?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Abstain.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
I believe that has five oh one. To all, congratulations. Thank you for the job well done. Counsel reports. Mr. Bishop, no, you don't want to start first, do you?
I don't have it.
Vice Mayor, uh, Hall?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, two quick things. Um, actually, just one quick thing. Um, nothing to report, because we didn't have a recreation commission meeting in January, uh, but the turn arrow is complete, uh, is my understanding. And, yes, and I have had numerous calls from, in, in response from citizens of the, of what, what used to be, is that the Hans Minus Territories? I'm trying to remember.
The left turn at the stop.
Yes, at the stop right there with Depot, and they're thrilled, uh, beyond, uh, measure, because we, they had thought it was going to be an additional eight months or so as well. But apparently, whatever you said to whomever you said it to expedited that process exponentially, really. So it was, uh, they're thrilled, and thrilled with the town's response to that. So thank you very much. That's all I've got to report, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
I don't have anything to report.
A brief report of town bikeway-walkway committee has been mobilizing to come before this board as we go through our finance, or as we go through the budget this year. It was, uh, four prioritized projects, and so hopefully in the next month or so, uh, as we get into our cycle and, and they get, you'll be hearing from them probably in April, I would guess. Um, maybe March, but definitely by April. Um, that's it.
Showalter. Didn't have any meetings, but I would like to talk about Central Business District Committee. Just something in relation real quick. Uh, as we all know, I anticipate, and I hope, hopefully council agrees with that, that if the farmers' market committee is successful, because we do have a lot of building owners downtown as merchants, that I would like to see the Central Business District Committee all, in, incorporate members from the downtown. But I would like to see, uh, because this is very important. It's always been on our mind for years about the farmers' market, and, uh, Mayor, you're, you're part of that, and I appreciate that. Um, but I'd like, can we get some minutes or some updates? Uh, like, we get the bikeway sometimes. Can we get some updates on the farmers' mar- not, not verbal. I'd like to actually see some minutes, so that I, I can read it and say, hey, we're moving forward. This looks great. So I can inform people other than, well, there was a meeting last weekend. I'm not really sure what happened with it, but...
Some informal, something. It's good.
That's what I'd like, and that's it.
Incidentally, I would like to invite each of you tomorrow night at five o'clock. We're having a farmer's market committee meeting, if you're interested.
I do want to mention something, because I did get an email from an individual who is possibly, uh, a group is looking at purchasing the Baptist church downtown and turning it into a cultural. Um, I'll meet with him on Thursday just to sort of get... I'll meet with him on Thursday just to sort of get some feedback, it's not official, but at least I was, somebody did reach out to me, so I'll let you know about that in a couple weeks.
Are you asking for those minutes or those informal minutes to be in, like, the agenda packets when those come?
Yeah, I'd like to see those.
Okay.
Cemetery Committee's gonna meet this Thursday at two o'clock and I think you can see some of the events that the Cemetery Committee has received and you may maybe see some action by the committee to actually do some of these things that have been already pre-designated and, and, and paid for.
Okay, is it it, Steve? Yeah, oh, okay, good. I need to address council with a, with a question, you don't have to give me an answer tonight, but I want, I would like in your mind to know what kind of monies that you would like to spend this first year on the farmers market. And I say that because I think that we are probably a little late in the grant process. We do have knowledge of several grants that we can apply for, I don't know that if we, if we apply now, whether we would get them prior to the start. I would propose a figure of about ten thousand dollars, that is not primarily salary and it's a seed, I mean, we may need four, we may need eight, but I'd like to, I'd like for you all to consider grant funding of about ten grand and we'll either take it out of tourism or recreation department or, and Barry and I talked about that this morning, that it, we feel that it is probably a, an extension of the recreation department, but I would like to, we have to hire a manager, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that tomorrow and getting that out, so I'm, I would like to throw out a figure of ten thousand and hope nobody chokes.
Is, are we still looking at the USDA and the FDA?
Well, we got, trying to get all those grants, but I mean, we're not.
Right.
We gotta have, in order to get those grants, we gotta have all of the, all of the, the business plans and the modules and all these things, which we're hopefully gonna report on tomorrow night, we're starting on those bucks, but I just don't want to get down to the last day and say, God, we don't have any money.
I think it's time we put our money where our mouth is, we've been talking about this for two years and ten grand and we might not use all, we gotta get started.
You're gonna give us some sort of line item about how much is going for this, how much is going for that? Or we just gonna give out ten thousand bucks?
No, I just like, we need the authority to say we will spend up to ten, but we'll, we'll certainly break it down as, we need to spend X number of dollars to hire our manager, we may need some signage, we may need some advertising.
The committee's looking into this.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this isn't something where somebody just says, this is the committee that has mer- mercenaries downtown, building owners downtown that we rarely had involved.
Oh, yeah.
And Mike's on it too and Barry, you, you're there as well.
Randy and Billy Alder, Bill Alder just heading it up and doing a very good job.
You know, I'm not, we assign this committee and they need something to get going.
Well, and I, I'd agree, but I, would, Mr. Helms, the, the grants though, the USDA and the FDA, they used to be seven thousand dollar grants because we had a variety of localities that utilized that, they're not matching grants. We, are those current, any of those currently available and then they cycle through?
I think they're for building something.
Mm-hmm, had to locate site.
I don't plan on building anything right now.
Right.
But, but there are a lot of other grants out there.
We always got a list.
I know they have to hire a court type person, I know that.
That's.
Potentially marketing money, potentially money for a snap machine.
That's a snap, right, which would be big for us.
Basically all of the prior applications, some of them require match, some of them require actual purchase of the machine first and then they reimburse it.
Yeah, I mean, but we've gotta have the documentation to prove that we're working farmers market before we can go out and really get into these things, so, you know, having the, knowing that we are asking for some seed money and will give us the abilities to, to go out and start moving forward on some of these things we need to do.
Do, do we know where that money's come, is gonna come from if we authorize ten grand?
What about the, I mean, the tourism makes, I mean, to me it makes a lot of sense to come out of tourism.
Yeah, we rarely use that fund in its entirety.
I agree with the tourism, that, that money, that half a percent or whatever it is, that's a lot of money and it's not been put to work. I know, you know, it's not, in fact, I would probably say we don't even spend ten or fifteen percent of that money, it disappears into general fund, is that right? I know, I shouldn't be saying that out loud.
In years past, we, well, years past, we use it for.
But there's no reserve for it, again in the year if it's not spent.
In years past, we use it for brochures.
Yeah, but I'm saying, there's still, I think there's a lot of money there.
All of that been said and they need the money to get this started, I'll make a motion to authorize up to expenditure of ten thousand dollars out of the tourism designated fund.
I'll second.
I think I would like to see something written down first, where that money is going, I'm not just gonna throw ten thousand bucks out.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it is a five one that we will, we will authorize up to, and Steve, I will get you documentation, you're on the record as wanting it, and we will get it to you.
Okay.
All right, town managers report.
I'd like to set two public hearings, roughly for the twenty fourth of February, one is for a new CUP for offices at four forty six Depot Street Northeast, that's a big house in the curb upon Depot Street, Community Housing Partners, there's current CUP requires an amendment if they enlarge any and they want to do some changes, so. And the second one is CUP for towns, farmers market, requires CUP and I guess we all have all our own bills. So, the twenty fourth of February is when I recommend those two be set.
Mr. Helms, that, just to give, from my understanding, the, there's always been some differing as to where that farmers market's gonna be located, obviously for the purpose of CUP, we're gonna have to know exactly where it's gonna be located, so it's, it has been pinpointed by the committee now because I know there were still.
We're talking about putting it on Hickock Street there beside the old DBR beside there.
That's, that's all, and that, that question's been asked and I've always said, I believe it's the Hickock Street, but I just wanted, now that we've got a CUP, we're standing, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
I so move that we set those two dates.
Second that.
A motion in a second to set the two public hearings, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
You gotta trust the committee.
Nice surprise occasion, work session for the meeting with Lisa Blakely and talk about the naming rights, selling naming rights.
Busy.
And I recommend next Tuesday night, but I don't know how y'all feel about that. You said you want to do them in work sessions, not as a separate meeting, not as part of regular meeting.
Is there?
I think we should definitely discuss it and I think that Randy has some paperwork on this from Roanoke because I write how they handle it and if nothing else, Randy can maybe do a little report if you wouldn't mind about what you heard and, and the money you have gotten and I, I think it's just something that we should look into, whether we go one way or another, but I think it's, it's, it's our, our advantage to, to, to know what's going on, on, on that case.
Could we do it next council meeting at six, have a work session?
I would ask for that if that'd be okay with the rest of the.
Those of us that are working would appreciate that.
Twenty, twenty seven?
I'm good with next Tuesday, but.
I'm, I'm gonna be in Carroll County, I know that, that evening and, and when I'm down there, since like I always get stuck.
Six o'clock, good, so we'll have Lisa Blakely, Blakely here and then any residue time we'll discuss, at least get into the discussing about naming rights, we certainly may not make a decision that night, but at least we'll, we'll at least get all the cards on the table.
Can we co-sponsor that with tourism so we can get an update on that? I feel like it's been a long time.
Well, that's what she's coming for.
Oh, she's coming.
Yeah, that's.
She said you won't be able to do it before you can ask her questions and stuff instead of in a regular council meeting.
Okay, okay, sounds great, thanks, Mayor, I missed that.
Okay, work session's twenty seventh is good with everybody at six o'clock?
Sir.
Public Works asked me if we could move spring cleanup dates, it's usually the first two weeks of April, which would be the fourth, starting the fourth of April they ask, which start on the eleventh of April, because meter reading starts the first of April and they have to pull people to help with meter reading right now still and it just makes it hard on, plus all it brushed out on top of the meters and, so they asked we'd delay it for a week starting the spring cleanup.
So, we go the eleventh through the?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
And the Christiansburg Institute banners are scheduled to go tomorrow on the flag holes, weather permitting, we're gonna add that on there. And if I could, I'd like to get the science committee together, try to set a meeting, we need to do a budget amendment and, so, see if we, if we have the time to do that.
You wanna talk to Brad now?
How long do you need?
Hour.
Oh, an hour?
It probably won't be tonight, it'll be five o'clock on the twenty seventh.
Do it at your pleasure, what, I mean, if it's a different time, it's fine.
You want me to just call y'all tomorrow and try to figure out how?
Yeah, I don't have my calendar, so.
Get Brad to give you a couple of dates he can work with and then just let me know, I'm more flexible.
Thanks for rubbing it in, thanks for rubbing it in, Jim.
That's retired.
But it depends on the weather.
We can do it early morning, too.
Yeah, that's same with me.
What else, Scott, Mayor?
The last thing is, mentioned that we had a mobile problem with a building down Station B, last week, the, had a bunch of horrible classrooms out to Auburn, building stool that are, have to move and the guy's selling them for five thousand dollars apiece and he'd bring them and set them back up and I went ahead and decided to order two of those and plan on tearing the building down eventually, by the time we strip it out, do the molding remediation and put everything back, it's gonna be well more than, so I figured another ten thousand dollars to get them set up and everything, so be more than twenty thousand dollars easily and they, the things are leaving quickly, it's selling as fast as people looked at them, so that.
Sounds like a good move to me.
I'm just surprised the fiscal didn't beat you to it, they put another one up there.
That's all it has.
Okay, Barry, if I can cut in, I'm not sure if any of us said anything about the Christmas decorations and I, I think that would be good if, when you have your next staff meeting, I thought the town did a great job and, and town looked great and I know some work that goes into all that and I know the council, we appreciate it and the people appreciate it too.
Yep, I make a point to drive downtown, going somewhere.
Looks good.
One quick question, Mr. Helms, Mr. Mayor.
The newsletter, Mr. Helms, that has been discussed, when, when is the first edition of that going to be out?
It went out with the water bills and it's online.
It is online?
It's at the drag center and Aquatic Center.
When, when, when is the water bill go out?
They went out like the third or fourth, fifth, maybe the fifth on.
Okay, so that, last Monday?
You know, you know, Mr. Hall, you can do a notify me that tells you when the bills are going out, water bills, you guys know that?
You can also sign up online to get the view.
Yeah, you do all that. I just noticed that the water bill notification, so I enrolled in everything to my wife's dismay.
And I, I was, that, when I was sick last month, I, I got behind on everything, reason I ask that is that, if, there's some things coming up, I wonder if you have any guidance for council, if we'd like to have, have something in there, I'm looking at April, which is prevention month that we get involved in, about having something excerpted in there.
You said me or Becky?
Okay, so Becky will be the one that is, that is producing that, it's coming through Becky.
Allison's doing most of the work on it.
Becky's overseeing the final results, I think, and it's anything, and, and Mr. Hall, I assume that we'll do this proclamation for the month, did we do it before?
Yes, and I'll get with you about some people coming in for five minutes of council too. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see Mr. Huppert's ready to go, is anybody else ready? I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That's a nice one. That's a nice one.